I call to order the June 29, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Bolton.
Thank you, Madam President. Would everybody please rise? For the Fledgled Legion. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Thank you. I want to start this afternoon by speaking to everyone about the format for today's meeting. You may have noticed that the members of the board are meeting in person. Because of the importance of this meeting, our board members felt it was very important for us to meet together in person along with the superintendent and the treasurer. We would have liked to have opened this meeting to the public, and we hope to resume in-person meetings again soon. But because of the great interest in this topic, our meeting last Monday generated more than 1,000 audience members. And the limited meeting space at the education center, we determined to livestream this meeting for the public as we have with all meetings since April 1st. We will have an agenda item for hearing of the public, but we are moving the superintendent's presentation to our first agenda item this afternoon. We want everyone to be able to hear the superintendent's presentation of the models under consideration for the 2020-2021 school year. Once the superintendent has finished her presentation, we will have our agenda item for hearing of the public. We invite you to participate in this conversation and to express your opinion. If you are interested in speaking, please use the raise your hand function and request to interact live with the board. Please do so now. Anyone interested in speaking should raise their hand now and during the first 15 minutes of the meeting. Because of time limitations at today's meeting, if you do not raise your hand in the first 15 minutes, you will not have the opportunity to participate in hearing of the public at today's meeting. So I'll go over the instructions now and then remind everyone when we get to that portion of the agenda. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. Please click on the hand icon now. Once the request has been granted by Treasurer Wagner, you will receive a notice on your screen. Click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera icon. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the livestream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. This is a change because we want to accommodate everybody who desires to speak. So when the buzzer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, June 22, 2020, and the business meeting, June 22, 2020.
They'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we don't have any committee reports to present today, so we're going to move right into the presentation. I'm going to ask Superintendent Mitchell to come forward.
Thank you. So if someone can pull up my PowerPoint, please? Great, thank you. So today, the administration is excited to be able to bring to the board considerations and hopes that a decision can be made relatively soon in terms of what the opening for the upcoming school year will look like for the 2020-21 school year. So today is a future of schools presentation. So there are three key messages, and these have been the key messages that we have really made sure that we kept in mind as we've been doing our work. The health and the safety of our young people, as well as all the people who enter our buildings and work with them. Accelerating academic achievement, so not just doing remediation or intervention, but actually accelerating academic achievement, especially considering that our buildings were closed the last 10 weeks of the last school year. And equity. And equity is not a new thing to the board. The board passed an equity resolution several years ago with a policy really highlighting equity throughout our district, and then specifically calling out racial inequities within our -- or disparities within our strategic plan. So during our last meeting, we offered the board some considerations, and the administration has -- we've gone back and we've looked at two of those offerings and decided that two of them are impractical. So Tiana Amad, in just a couple of moments, will introduce the last three considerations that we have to give to the board after Sarah Trimble Oliver presents some information regarding safety and the CDC. But if you remember, one option, the first option or variation one called for students being in school two days a week, one week, and then three days a week the next week, and that's all elementary and high schools. Options two and three would have the students in school both elementary and high, but we were able to expand the number of elementary days by expanding the kids or placing them and spreading them all across the district, which means elementary kids would be in high school buildings, and on the days that elementary students would not be meeting, then high school students would be in elementary buildings. We also looked at the possibility of looking at external space to be able to spread our high schoolers out in community settings across the district. And both of those options really are impractical and, to some extent, out of our control in terms of having the space in the community for our high school students, and then also having an appropriate place for high school students within our elementary sites. And so this evening, we are prepared to present three considerations for you this evening. And I would ask that Sarah Trimble Oliver come forward at this point in time to just guide us through our guiding principles and the CDC report, as well as our work with Children's
Good afternoon. So you guys may remember these five guiding principles that were landed on after discussion at board meetings and by the step committee and from the parent survey. We would like to strive for a balance of health and safety and as much in-person classroom time as possible. We would like to make equitable decisions because we know that both the pandemic and the effects of remote learning most negatively impact people of color in this country. We would like to use data to guide decision-making and stay up on the most recent data coming from a variety of sources. And we also must consider the financial implications because the safety precautions that we are planning for do have cost implications, while at the same time, we are having decreased funding from the state. On the next slide, you will see what we are all familiar with by now, the 31 health and safety precautions recommended by the Center for Disease Control in order to reopen schools in the safest manner possible. We have begun planning for these precautions. In fact, today, we were at an all-day design session with Children's Hospital at South Avondale Elementary, looking at how to apply these processes in our own buildings. These precautions become even more important as we see an increase in community spread of COVID-19, like we are seeing now in our state and county. And many of these safety measures require additional spending by the district. For example, masks, sanitizer, soap, and disinfectant, building ventilation, additional substitute staff, and daily health assessments. Now, on this list of CDC guidelines, the modified layouts precaution suggests six feet of physical distancing at all times, including in the classroom. Based on our analysis of square footage, even with creative use of the space, such as gyms, cafeterias, art and music rooms, and media centers, we do not have enough space to allow a full six-foot distancing in all school buildings with all 36,000 students at the same time. Now, the World Health Organization did release their updated guidance, which recommends that classroom spacing be kept at a minimum of one meter, which is a little over three feet. This does reduce the risk of spread, but is not as effective as six feet. But this would allow more students in the classroom at the same time. Continuing on to the next slide, I did already mention the design session that we held at Children's -- I'm sorry, at South Avondale, and it was facilitated by Children's Hospital. And we had a group of 40 people there in attendance in the cafeteria with social distancing and masks and hand sanitizer, of course, working on designing new processes for our CPS buildings. And for example, how to implement staggered scheduling, how to implement meals in classrooms, how to implement daily health assessments. And we had experts from Children's Hospital giving us expert medical advice, as well as expert process improvement and design advice. It was an incredible day. Today, we generated many thoughtful and creative ideas. We look forward to continuing that process design through the month of July in partnership with Children's Hospital. And now I will invite Ms. Amad up.
Good afternoon. I'm here to recap the three models. The first, blended learning with six feet of social distancing. We are able to maintain the six feet by having half of the student population come in in two groups. So all students will have a minimum of two days in person, Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday, with an alternating Wednesday. Students would stay in their current school buildings, and classroom instruction will be led by a highly qualified teacher. Our last two options are in-person with three feet of social distancing. Option two is with five days, utilizing three feet from the World Health Organization guidelines for social distancing plus all other health precautions. The five days per week provides lowest academic risk and provides the most in terms of social and emotional learning and support. Option five also supports our families with small children who would need childcare. And our last option is four days a week. Again, three feet of social distancing, but also providing all other health precautions. All of the teachers would be highly qualified in both models. Thank you.
So in summary, I'd like to point us to the comparison across the models and also back to our risk management model that we've been using to guide our work over the last several months. So let me just give a little context in terms of, we looked at what's high and low risk and medium risk educationally, as well as health-wise. And so as an example, complete remote learning would be very low risk in terms of health, but it would be very high risk in terms of our kids not having access to their teachers in a face-to-face setting. We looked at high risk in terms of health would be if we did not have any level of social distancing, no mask-wearing, no health checks, no temperature checks, no assessment, and not be able to identify kids who are exhibiting symptoms or people who are exhibiting symptoms very quickly. We would consider that to be very high risk. And so if we look at each model that we have come to you with tonight, as Tiana Amad has outlined for us, so the first one is for two days a week, one week, three days another week, and there are some pros and cons to that. So a pro, one of the pros would be that it could potentially, and doctors often use the word potentially, lower health risk because it provides six feet of social distancing according to the CDC, and it does provide for smaller cohorts. The cons are that it doesn't cover daytime care for parents. So approximately 26,000 of our kids are in elementary school, so pre-K through sixth grade, though it wouldn't cover daytime care for our parents. Only five days over two weeks would be in-person face-to-face instruction. So in a two-week time span, a child would have access to their teacher face-to-face five times. It would also make it a little bit more difficult for kids to access meals, medical care, and related services in terms of physical therapy, occupational therapy. Those things would be a little bit harder for parents and kids to be able to access. Five days in person with three feet of social distancing, there are some pros and there are some cons. A pro is that it's best academically, socially, and emotionally for our kids, and that doesn't come from Laura Mitchell, the superintendent. It actually comes from the American Association of Pediatrics. So they produced a report and a guideline last Friday that really talked about the significant child abuse, sexual abuse, physical abuse that took hands or were in place during the time that our schools were actually closed down, and that cases were not reported because kids and parents sometimes didn't have the venue to report as they do in school. Here are some of the cons. It requires less than six feet of social distancing. It is reflective, however, of the World Health Organization in terms of three-feet guidance for schools, which is being used in Europe. The AAP, which is the American Association of Pediatrics, also notes that rigorous wearing of masks could help and be as safe as six feet of social distancing. So with preventative measures, mask-wearing included, three feet could be potentially as safe as six feet. The last option would include four days, and so there are some pros and some cons. So better academic and social-emotional opportunities for our kids, again, as reflected by the AAP. It allows for extra deep cleaning, so one day a week, the students would be working remotely, which would give us the opportunity to make sure that we are constantly deep cleaning our buildings. And it would also allow for a cadence of one day a week, so the parents would know specifically every week it's this one day in which students will be doing remote learning. There are some cons, and they include less than six feet of social distancing, but reflective of the World Health Organization of three-feet guidance for schools. And it wouldn't cover childcare for the one-day students that are not in session. That gives you a summary of the three models and the pros and cons for each one of those models. Next slide, please. Now, in addition to the board selecting a model, hopefully this evening, we do have other options, though, for parents who may not want to send their children back at all. Though our survey that we administered about a month ago indicated that 5% of the families are choosing not to send their students back to CPS until there's a vaccine. So we do have an option and a model for those parents, and that is through our Digital Academy. The Digital Academy is an academy that we have had in our district for quite some time. We are very much interested in doing some revamp of that curriculum. We have over 300 kids who are currently enrolled in the Digital Academy and are looking -- we're looking at very closely the enrollment on a daily basis to look at the increase of enrollment as a result of COVID-19. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our treasurer to talk about the cost implications related to each one of our models. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Here's a cost comparison of each of the models, and I just would like to remind the board and the public that because of the downward churn in economics caused by the COVID virus and the closing of schools and closing of businesses, we had to revise our budget downward to a maximum of $625 million so that we could maintain the proper cash flows into the new year. So each of these models has a different cost. They range from $23 million additionally to $32 million at the highest. The difference between those models and their costs is the second model, the middle model, includes extra transportation because we have more children on current bus routes than would be allowed under those safety rules. And then the second two models, we anticipate having to add paraprofessionals to help with masking, temperature, and helping kids go through the buildings. So those are explanations. Each model includes about $7 million of additional technology to support remote learning, and somewhere between $3.5 to $4.5 million in additional cleaning supplies to do the deep cleaning and buying masks, and those things that we need to keep our buildings clean and safe. So we were able to apply some of the CARE Act money. We used some of the CARE Act money this summer for our summer remote learning, and some of it we used that qualifies under these models. So that each model, when compared to the budget reduction and the cost of each model, has some required reductions in our current level of spending in order to balance the budget to $625. So under the first model, we would need to cover 47, almost $48 million in reductions. And the other two models, the most expensive one, of course, we'd have to cover a little bit more, $57 million. And then in the third model, we would have to cover $52 million in reductions based on our current level of spending for the current year. So with that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions, or is there somebody after me? That was it?
Okay, do board members have questions at this point? Any clarifying information needed? Is, are you concluded, or do you have?
This does conclude our presentation of the three models and the cost factors, as well as the pros and cons for each model.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are now at the -- I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. We forgot to do kudos and retirements. I'm so eager to get to the conversation, sorry. Does anyone have any kudos? Okay, no kudos today, Ms. Bates? Did you have a kudo, Mr. Messer?
I was just going to give a kudo. I think all of us share in our appreciation for the amount of hours that our administration has put into getting us to the point of making the decision. I think all of us came to the table with many, many, many concerns that we heard from a variety of stakeholders, and each one of them was met with the same respect and tenacity in finding answers and getting a response. So thank you to Laura and her entire team for all the hours you've put in during this pandemic to get us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other kudos at this time? I think we all concur with that, Mr. Messer. Thanks. Okay, Ms. Bates, do we have any retirements?
Retirement from our civil service personnel, and that is Linda Spitznagel, Senior Support Specialist. So we thank Ms. Spitznagel for her service for our children and wish her well in her new life.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, so we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings at this time. We are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. So once again, you will have, you would have had to raise your hand in the first 15 minutes, but everybody who raised their hand in that timeframe will have an opportunity to speak for two minutes. Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. Again, if you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera icon. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Wagner.
Okay, our first speaker is Jeff Hammond. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Wagner and board and superintendent. I'm a Clark Montessori parent. I had two high schoolers with trips canceled to the Philippines and New York City. I talked with Ms. Mitchell about it and some of the deputies, and because I started this pandemic with a fatalistic notion that just, let's just let it play out. I was wrong. I sent towards the end of March a thank-you note to the superintendent and to the deputies to say thank you for having a more cautious approach than I was having at that time. You all probably didn't see Governor DeWine at his press conference while you were in executive session, but he specifically called out Hamilton County and his discussion with about our county in a White House meeting right before the press conference about our surge in cases and hospital visits that are doubled and higher than they even were during the month of April, and they're continuing to trend upward. So I think we all want a solution that can last for the whole year. We don't, we don't want a, something that is just, something that we have to start and then we have to abandon. The three feet, to me, feels like business as usual. Feels like that, except for some masks and for some cleaning. The six-foot option feels like it's the middle ground of wisdom that works to protect opportunities in both academics and health and safety. There were some mentions of Europe, and we have some family in Austria that we spoke with yesterday. They're doing every other weekend person education, which is scenario number one. They do three days in class, they have the weekend, they do two days in class, and then the other half does the next week of the other three days in two days, and they alternate. They're still in school for the next few weeks, so that's how we know exactly what's going on there. I see you all being six feet there right now, and I trust that you won't disrespect our students more than you respect yourselves with health and safety in the same way. That's why I request that you use option number one. Thank you very much.
Jeff, your two minutes are up.
Thank you.
Your two minutes are up. We apologize. We're going to have to move on. I'm going to remind the people in the audience, please try your best to limit to two minutes. I mean, we don't want to cut people off, and we will allow you to finish your thought, but please be cognizant of the time.
Okay, our next caller is Deborah Holloway.
Hi. I just had a couple of comments and a question. I've never heard any talk of the possibility of having, establishing satellite locations in the community. So instead of getting kids to come all to the same school, for example, we could have a couple of locations, and we can maybe work with area churches, rec centers, or whoever, so that we're not trying to get all the kids together. But I'd like to see something more stable. This, on again, off and again, from face-to-face to remote, I think, can be confusing to a lot of kids, especially the younger kids, and even to the parents, especially if they're trying to work. And that inconsistency, I think, can make it more difficulty, difficult. I teach at Roberts, so I'm always asking the question, if everything that you're saying to us in the, in the meeting can be presented on a simple chart, family, community-friendly language, so all stakeholders can understand what you're saying. language, so all stakeholders can understand what you're saying, because it goes fast during the meeting. And that would also include translations of all the documents in the language of origin for all of our CPS families. And that's basically the main thing I, I'm concerned with, because I agree with the previous one. I don't think three feet will, I'd rather not be, I don't wanna be sick because we're trying to get them in the building if it's not safe. And also with the cleaning, how, yeah, I know, we know remote is not as good as in-person, but if we're spending a lot of our time cleaning during the day, I'm not sure how much instruction will be going on compared to remote. Thank you.
The audience, that we typically do not respond to direct questions. I will say that because today's agenda, we, we made some modifications. We are hoping that when the board has its discussion about the options, that maybe some of your questions will be answered at that time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tamisha Gordon. Go ahead, Tamisha.
Hi. My name is Tamisha Gordon. Today, I'm just, I'm here to talk about that. I, I feel like we should do the four-day, four-day in school, then one-day deep cleaning. I'm a CPS student, I've been one my whole life, and I feel as if we remove ourselves, if we do, I feel like that's gonna be unsteady if we're two days in school and then three days in school. It's gonna be very unsteady because some kids need school. I'm one of the kids who needs school. I need to be in school. I need that teacher experience because I, if I don't have it, I feel like I'm gonna, I'm gonna feel miserably. I'm gonna, I, I over, I overthink, I overdo, and it's just gonna be a very bad experience, especially for me. I feel as if, they're gonna just run the streets, or they're not gonna do the work at all, and the grades are gonna fail tremendously. We already have, the district overall grade is an F as it is, and if we're out of school, it's, it's gonna stay an F. It's not going to improve at all. We need to be in school. We need them four days of learning. We need that teacher, that teacher interaction time. That's what kids need. That's, that's what we need. We need stability. We need, we, I understand it's a pandemic going on, but we also need our education. That is the most important goal, is our education. Thank you. I hope I did that right.
Our next speaker is Yimani Scott.
Hello. Hello. My name is Yimani Scott. I attend Woodward Career Technical High School. I haven't been in CPS my whole life, so I've seen how other schools work. I started in CPS in seventh grade, but in just these last three years, I've noticed many injustices within the system that is Cincinnati Public Schools. It was very off-putting and currently still is as I enter my junior year. The, they want to provide education to all students with rigor and care and a culture of excellence to develop engaged citizens who are prepared for life. If this is a mission of CPS, I would like for you to hold yourselves accountable through your actions, not just your words. Our vision states Cincinnati Public Schools will be a community that assures equitable access to the world-class education unleashing potential of every student. We're not currently receiving this. Some schools, some students may be, but not every student. I'm having issues with the vision statements because our students are a lot smarter than the district may realize. A lot of our so-called problem students are a lot smarter than may, people may perceive them to be. The district is not treating these students like they have that unlimited potential. The district is limiting students' potential by not allocating resources to schools, which can make our vision and mission statement a reality. We feel the district has chosen not to value our students' voices such as mine and my peers and are tired of waiting for this to happen. Therefore, we are taking matters into our own hands to eliminate the current inequities that exist. Though COVID interrupted our momentum with this work, our momentum is now back. I hope that you will allow us to go back to school. At least, I do think I like the three-to-four-day-week option. I hope that you remember what I said today as you figure out the details of our reopening after you vote today. We are paying attention and will not be letting up until the CPS mission and value statements become reality. Thank you for your time.
I know that was a student who spoke, but I'm gonna ask and encourage people to slow down. We, we had a hard time hearing, or at least understanding, that at least I did. But we appreciate, we want, if it's a student especially, we wanna hear from you. But we couldn't hear it. It was just a little bit, it sounds like she was reading. So help her out.
Okay. Our next speaker is Hala Karim.
Good cases in the state of Ohio are on a steady incline since the premature reopening of businesses in mid-May. 854 cases were reported yesterday. Overall, Ohio has seen over 2,800 people perish due to this novel virus. In the past week alone, Ohio has reported a 50% increase in cases. Nationwide, we've seen 120,000 people lose their lives due to failure by our state and federal government. In case, in countries where COVID has ravaged populations, such as Italy, quick action by their government choosing to heed medical advice has proven effective in flattening the curve. I'm heartbroken and baffled that decisions to close businesses and schools to protect our fellow citizens and ourselves has caused such political division in the country, in the state, and in this district. I understand that many parents and teachers alike are eager to send students back to school. I understand the social, emotional benefit of being able to see your friends and teachers in person. I am an English teacher, and I've experienced the disparity between teaching in person and remote learning, which is not a preferred substitute. These concerns are valid, but these, as I'm sure everyone in this meeting has heard countless times, are not normal times. These are exceptional times of uncertainty and chaos, and the risk of reporting back to our buildings even once or twice a week outweighs the reward. As one concerned citizen put it, while I appreciate the attempt to perform risk analysis that helps prioritize the effect on students' emotional and academic well-being versus the COVID risk, it's extremely disingenuous to line these up on the same scale as if they were equivalent. The living always have an opportunity to keep learning and hopefully catch up. The downside is literally the hospitalization and death of teachers, caretakers, and high-risk students. We know that asymptomatic carriers of COVID are rapidly spreading the disease. We know it's affecting younger demographics. We don't yet know the extent of how it affects people in recovery. However, Reuters reports that patients with COVID have seen damage in their pancreas, heart, liver, kidney, and other organs. It can lead to blood clotting, strokes, neurological complications, and permanent loss of taste and smell. It's not an ordinary flu. This is a life-ravaging disease that we can prevent by keeping our distance. Unfortunately, this includes not being able to interact with each other in the classroom. The risk is simply too high. I call upon the school board to consider the lives and damage. Thank you. That's fine. Thanks.
Our next speaker is David Brenner. Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for the time to speak today. Last year, the board passed policy 5311 for medically and scientifically accurate curriculum in our health classrooms. Adopting any plan that ensures three feet of distancing instead of six feet goes against scientific and, science and recommendations from Dr. Fauci, CDC, and the WHO, people that understand the best medical and scientific advice. The three-foot guideline from the WHO assumed that spread was under control, not just because. The American Academy of Pediatrics, in their statement, said that strict adherence to six feet was necessary for coming back to school, even though they did advise students come back. Are you going to be contrary to district policy that you yourselves unanimously passed and go against scientific recommendations? The distancing recommendation was in addition to other measures, not instead of. Some families, including mine, have people that are in a high-risk category. We need to make sure that our families can remain part of their existing school communities for the good of our students. With all due respect, pushing students to Digital Academy does not serve our students because you're taking them out of their communities, their magnet programs, the schools they currently attend. No one should need to choose between the life of a family member and their school choice. The reality is, we need to plan for distance learning because there's always going to be students out of the classroom for extended periods. Individuals will need to be isolated at home for two weeks at a time because illness or risks from exposure. These students need to continue to be engaged in their classwork and participate in the classroom experience remotely. This is in addition to times when schools need to be closed for health reasons. Any plan needs to acknowledge this and account for it. I hope that you're going to take into account all of the science and go with a plan that minimizes time in school while addressing the needs for proper education. You know the right answer. You passed the policies that indicate what you should do. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Alyssa Allen.
Hello. My name is Alyssa Allen, and I teach kindergarten at AME. My points today all surround one gaping thought, which is how much risk is going to be imposed on not only students but on employees. For starters, I do not feel like three feet is social distancing. It does not feel safe. Last week, it was mentioned that kids would not stay six feet apart anyways, but what was not considered in that conversation was the amount of children that allows in the classroom. I have had up to 32 kids in my kindergarten classroom. That is not ideal or productive outside of a pandemic, no less during a rising national health crisis. I can much more effectively teach 12 kids during a school day, even half of the time, than I can 24-plus all days of the week. Smaller classroom sizes should be the norm, and it is safer and far more effective, which is why I strongly prefer favor, option one. The second major point I really wanna touch on is that of subs. First off, teachers should not be treated as expendable or replaceable. Further, I feel like there is this image that we will have a sufficient amount of substitutes to replace the teachers who get sick. That is not going to be the case. When we return in the fall, I am going to be eight months pregnant, and I have been searching for a long-term sub for months to take my maternity leave, and no one I have asked is willing to return to school in the fall. Many of our district's subs are retired teachers, or on the opposite end of the spectrum, have young families, and they're not willing to take the risk. So the idea that there will be this plethora of substitutes is false, and that needs to be taken into serious consideration. I wanna be in the classroom. I love teaching. I love what I do, but I wanna make sure that when we return, we are doing it in the safest way possible. Overall, I feel like several of these models are treating teachers as sacrificial lambs where convenience is being considered over safety, and any plan that is chosen today needs to be one that you would feel comfortable pursuing as a teacher and not as an outsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julian with no last name. Go ahead, Julian.
I just wanted to also reiterate my preference for option one. I have a kindergartner who's going in the first grade, and one a sixth grader and a seventh grader. Homeschooling is not fun. It's not something that I wanna do, like, ever, really. But I want my kids to be safe, and I don't think that three feet of distance is safe. And I know that you guys are getting used to masks, but let's be honest, if you've walked outside lately, no one is wearing them. And you're gonna get parents who say, my kid has a medical issue. Okay, and they might, but are you going to require documentation for that? Are you going to space those children six feet? Are you going to do anything to protect all people that can be in the class? And, I mean, there's, there's so many, there's so many other parents out there that I don't trust. And I do trust that the school board has a basis in science and reason, but there are a lot of people who don't. And so I'm not willing to put the life of my kids in the hands of people who don't, don't even wanna, you know, stay home, you know, refuse to not go out to dinner five nights a week in busy restaurants. I just, it's not safe for my kids, it's not safe for the teachers, for anyone in the school. So I really just hope that, you know, you think strongly about the standards and about the people who aren't willing to follow the rules that you wanna put in place. Thank you.
Ms. Wagner, give me a minute. It, board, I think one of the things that's going on, there's a lot of feedback coming from the technical aspect. So board members are requesting, if at all possible, if you could turn on your live video screen so we can at least see you, and it might help us to hear you better. It seems like we're getting some feedback for those who are not live on video. So if you're able to do that, please do so. If not, we just ask you to just slow down a little bit. We wanna make sure we hear you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Megan Creeps. Go ahead, Megan.
Hi. My name is. Thank you so much for, members of the board and Superintendent Mitchell, I'm here to highlight our immigrant community needs. I will include some language from a resolution passed by the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers on May 7th, as well as my own ideas. I want to highlight these immigrant needs that are always present, but I hope that the serious nature of the coronavirus may serve to expedite their needs, make them more systematic, and incentivize our leadership and staff to do right by that community. All families have a legal right to important information from the school and a language they can understand, so it is important that all communication be in our three most prevalent languages. At the same time that English communication is released, communication should include images, videos with closed captioning, and simplified English, especially for those who speak languages that are difficult to find interpretation and translation. This includes, but is not limited to, closure information, safety protocols, PBIS plans, technology guides, technology help sessions, health information, pickup protocols, food distribution, and much, much more. We've heard discussion about nurses in every work site, in schools with a high number of ELS who speak the same language. Nurses should also speak that language. Teachers know that our students need to be safe and have more social, emotional supports. So again, counselors, mental health professionals, social workers, and partner agencies should be reflective of student populations in terms of cultural background and languages spoken. We will need ITM training for staff and families. So ITM staff who speak multiple languages or have experience working with multilingual families should be prioritized. And lastly, if we are in any kind of blended model with reduced time in school, we should have reduced time in testing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. William Gordon.
Hello. Can you see me? So I am, I teach at Walnut Hills High School, and I am a high-risk student in at least two categories. I'm over 65, and I have asthma. I would, based on the knowledge I have and the research I've done, I am comfortable in a three-foot environment with students wearing masks. I think that's appropriate. Based on my experience teaching with the students last year and past experience as a college teacher, remote learning is not very effective for the students because they get much of the value of their learning from interacting with other students. I see. I forgot to allow, allow the camera. So I strongly support the five-day option. I think that's the appropriate option. And I say that even though I am a high-risk, person at high risk.
Yes, sir. Are, are you completed?
I think so.
Okay.
Did you hear what I said, or did you not hear what I said?
We, we, we heard what you said. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Tiffany with no last name. Go ahead, Tiffany.
Hi there. My name's Tiffany Jensen, and I just wanted to share that five days feels unsafe to me, both from a COVID standpoint and even emotionally, because I feel like if we are doing the three-foot distance, we are really going to have to double down with all the other precautions. And the fact of the matter is, the sad thing is that social distancing is not really good for child development, but it's what we have to do with, with COVID. So I would rather have smaller classes and the opportunity to make... and the opportunity to maybe have some shared learning things because there's less children in the classroom. So maybe they can do group work with three students because those three students can spread out and get a little distancing and have more of that flow-based group learning scenario better with less people in the classroom than they could with everybody in five days. To me, you lose the benefit of the social piece with that because the kids aren't going to be able to move from their desks because there's just too many kids in the room. And that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Next speaker is Leslie Mooney.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for listening. I would just say, I'm a parent with an incoming kindergartner, third grader and fourth grader at Fairview Clifton German Language School. And I would say that in the late spring, I was definitely on the side of favoring the option one in terms of what was coming out of, from the CDC and the heightened awareness and risks associated. However, in the last few months, I've done a really deep dive as things in other countries have opened back up, specifically schools. There's research that's come out from abundance of sources on looking at the whole child. And as I know that this board is so an administration, so student-centered, I think it's really important, and I'm so glad that the superintendent pointed out in her presentation, the recent recommendations and science behind the Academy of Pediatricians that came out with their studies and their specifically statement about, "In many schools, sitting six feet between students is not feasible without limiting the number of students. Evidence suggests that spacing as close as three feet may approach the benefits of six feet of space, particularly if students are wearing face coverings and are asymptomatic." So as we learn more, as scientists and doctors learn more about the risks specifically of students and of teachers, because of course we cannot not take that into account, then I have come to the belief through this research that the five-day option is what's best. And I think that there are lots of creative and flexible and operations committees, as you all know, formed at each of the schools. And we stand ready to assist in making that experience as safe as possible, but also protecting the health and well-being of the students, who are always at the center of the decision-making for this school board. And I greatly appreciate it. And that's all for me. Thanks, guys.
Our next speaker is Kristin Copeland.
Hi, thank you. Can you see me? So thank you for giving us this option. I am a CPS parent of the last eleven years, first at Pilgore and now at Walnut Hills. I have two children. I'm also a general pediatrician for eighteen years. And I had the great honor of providing the board some studies in the last week that provided some sort of reassurance that fortunately for this terrifying disease, that actually child-to-child transmission and child-to-adult transmission is really quite low. I want to, what I heard in the presentation by the superintendent was a focus on masks, ventilation, and on sanitizer and hand soap, which I think is going to be very important. I want to applaud the board and the superintendent for the focus on equity, for basing decisions on evidence and science and involving the experts, and really importantly, involving community input. I also note that a lot of hours and a lot of work was done, and I am really delighted to be a part of this district. It seems that we have three great options, balancing the three feet versus the six feet, and balancing the two days versus the five versus four days in the childcare needs. I think the board is going to do a great job in making a decision. A couple other things I want to bring up that the board should be thinking about is first, to trust parents when they say that their child is sick and don't require doctor's notes or enforce any truancy laws during this next period. Second, to collect input on these three models from parents, teachers, and importantly, students. And I really appreciated that Tamisha and Zomani were speaking up at the beginning of the call. I also appreciate Dr. William Gordon's comments. Third, enforce masks-wearing. It can be done. We are seeing it done in many states and around the world, and I think it can be the saving grace of this. And then fourth, thinking about extracurriculars and spectators and requiring that masks be worn in those events. So again, I appreciate the board collecting input from all the stakeholders in the process the board is using. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Speaker is Kiri Pash. Go ahead.
Superintendent Laura Mitchell, for listening to me today, as well as everybody who's spoken before me. I wanted to address a more specific situation. I would like to represent the specialists, the art and cultures teachers across the district who see almost all of our students. A lot of us teach multiple classes a day, again, with a lot of high school teachers, but we will see hundreds of students in a day. Some of us have been hearing that we might lose our rooms. That would be an interesting thing because then all of us would be in a different area. And then that concern would be, would we be traveling from class to class? Then that is a risk of exposure for us, as well as all those kids that we would be going to their rooms if we were able to have just the classroom-inclusive. I'm worried that some of these things would be overlooked. The different situations in the schools, the cafeteria, gym class, recess, when they go to the bathroom, when they eat lunch, when they eat breakfast. How are those things going to be taken care of, those things that are outside the general classroom? Many of our schedules are also back-to-back. So the idea of disinfecting as much as we can in between classes would have to change all of our schedules. There's also a few teachers that see hundreds of students a day that are immunocompromised, who have these big worries that they need to be, that need to be spoken up. And if we are able to do the first options, which I am for, we would need to worry about having enough supplies for students without sharing because arts and culture are what best form our community, and they help solidify those relationships with other communities and within our own. So I feel like the arts are very important right now in a way to keep us connected virtually, since we are kind of dying for those things right now. Thank you so much for listening, and I hope that you consider my comments in your decision.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Sharon with no last name. Sharon, are you out there?
Hi, Sharon. This is Sharon Silver. I actually work in public health. There's been a lot of transmission among college students on spring break. I just want to say, twenty years old is not some magic number. A lot of those college students are twenty. They're transmitting it to each other, to their families. The risk is lower in younger kids. It hasn't been really adequately studied. Teens are a separate situation. It's not like magically you're twenty, you can transmit it. So that's one thing to consider. The second thing is, we really need a stable, interactive, remote option. Remote does not have to equal not interactive. I have brought up the streaming question. I've been told it's too expensive, but I have not yet seen a breakdown of exactly what the costs are. There, I know teachers were zooming in the spring. That may not be perfect, but it seemed to work well. Several of my kids' teachers continue to teach that way. They were able to participate in the classroom with a remote option. It seems to be much better than the digital academy option. The digital academy, if it's still going to use Apex, it's not interactive at all. I'd be curious to hear how it's going to be beefed up. Also, I would really like to know, the kids who need to stay out of the school and need to transfer to the digital academy, is that a formal transfer? Will they be promised that they, will they be guaranteed that they can go back to their home schools once the parents feel like it's safe, especially the schools that are in demand? Is that going to be seamless? My kids have expressed concerns about that. The other thing is, some of the high schools can't really accommodate even six-feet distance in the hallways, in the bathrooms. I don't know where these line up for daily health checks would even happen. So lots of things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paulette S. Go ahead, Paulette.
Yes, I am a parent of a student, and my child attends Walnut Hills. And one of the current concerns my child has is the safetiness of a building that hosts over three thousand students. One of the concerns is, if my child was to attend CDA and who is an honor student, how is the curricula, the rigor going to be placed and held if my child chooses not to go because of the pandemic? That's one of the biggest concerns that I had that Sharon brought out and as Mr. Brenner brought out, that is a huge concern. And I just wish that they would be able to address that and find the needs to meet all of our students as well, who are in specialized programs, that they would be able to do something remotely with the specialized teachers that teach that, not just go through a digital program, suggest the streaming. Something has to give in order for the students to be able to succeed during this pandemic and not have to go back to the way it was because actually they'll end up losing out. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sean Kelly. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you for your time today. And I just want to put, I'm a parent of four children in CPS. I also work closely with the district on several initiatives, and I firmly believe that it needs to be a four-to-five-day school week. I believe with the cooperation that you already have with Cincinnati Children's, you have many, many pediatricians and infectious diseases in your own community of parents who could serve as ongoing experts. I think it's the best for all kids, which is what you, as this large of a school district, has to talk about, all the students in your district. So I would recommend and suggest to go for the five-day or the four-day option. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is first initial M, last name Henry. Go ahead, caller.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, my name is Marjorie Henry, and I'm a CPS teacher. And my concern also is with the three-feet designation. I believe that is entirely too close. I teach high school, and the students actually need space. Additionally, the concern as far as having the students come in with their PPEs and being sure they're reinforced is a big concern because we don't want them to come in, not have masks. And as a longtime CPS teacher, I love teaching, have very good attendance. I just want everyone to think about, what is the value of education as the value of a human life? Because some of us have people at our homes who are at high risk. And of course, we want to be concerned about the safety of staff and the students. And my second point is, and I know it may not be related, I value the police. I want you all to keep them in the schools. They're well-needed and appreciated. Thank you very much.
Our next caller is Allison, I'm sorry, G-O-I-C-O.
Thank you very much. I just want to weigh in in favor of the five-day week option. I think it can be almost certain that there will be at least some districts across the state and across the nation that do go back five days a week. And I think we need to consider if we don't go back on that same timetable, if we're going to be significantly. I'm a parent of two elementary school children, and I think it's crucial for elementary school-aged children to get in-person education if they're going to. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jessica Powell. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name. Okay, good afternoon. My name is Jessica Powell, and I am a parent of three kids, ages four, four, and six. All three attend Gamble Montessori Elementary. I am strongly, strongly in favor of the four-to-five-day school week. For me, for many parents, as much in-person school as possible is going to be critical. My choice is grounded in the fact that online learning doesn't work for most CPS families, including mine. And social interaction is critical for students of all ages, as well as making sure particularly older kids, but also kids, families without daycare choices, have options. I realize that school is not a babysitter, but school is what helps many parents, including me, keep working. I understand that all parents are not comfortable with this four-to-five-day school option. We've heard it today. And to that, I would just say, I think having the opt-out option is a really great opportunity for those families and that it will help hopefully de-densify the schools for those of us sending our kids back. I don't envy the tough position that CPS is in. I think it's done a really great job considering all of the options. I hope to God we get this under control in the next two months, the COVID uptick. And I recognize that this takes a village and that CPS can't do it on its own. And I hope that CPS and CPS families get the help that we need from the state, from Governor DeWine, ODE, the city, and the business community. So I, that's where I'm coming from, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Spenny. Go ahead, Andrea.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Spenny, and I'm a teacher at Woodward High School. I'm not sure who made this happen, but I'm thankful that after I pointed out how difficult it was to find the information for last Monday's board meeting, that a notification went out to all staff regarding this. I'm thankful that it's on our district's website, and it's my hope and expectation that this will happen in the future, or for all future meetings. I know you have a tough decision to make today, but I'm happy to see that all options include students attending school in our buildings at least two days a week if they choose. Earlier today, I saw that the minister of last Monday's meeting listed the topic of my hearing of the public time as, and I quote, "concern about black students." I'm not sure who was in charge of listing the topics, but I need to clarify on my topic as I am not just concerned about our black students, and the majority of what I said last week was not about my concern for our black students. Today, you could put my topic as "concern about the lack of attention to the systemic racism that continues to exist in our district." I have concerns about the inaction of district leadership to helping eradicate the inequities in our schools. I have concerns about the money we give to outside organizations for quote-unquote "authentic" student and family engagement. And we could spend money doing this in-house. I have concerns about minority contracts. When I see that many of the businesses, specifically construction and landscaping businesses, you have a lot of money to recently, are owned by white men. I have concerns about the partnership Cincinnati Public Schools has with the Cincinnati Blue Lion Foundation, which is a nonprofit that is, and I quote, "focused on increasing the size of the police force, coordinating events that raise much-needed police department funds, and acquiring supplemental equipment and resources that are not addressed in the City of Cincinnati's annual budget." I have concerns that when you call the number listed on their website, it is the Fraternal Order of Police that picked up. I've inquired about this partnership, and I will continue to be concerned until I receive answers from the district. Though our time is cut short today, I hope you're able to look into my concerns before we see each other at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is A Israel. Can you turn your microphone on? Can't get it to come on. Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker in case there's, can Jeremy reach out to her or him? Tracy Cummings.
Good afternoon. I am a teacher.
I am a teacher as well as a parent in my district. And I have a question about should we go with the remote learning? If should we continue with that model? What we will do to ensure that all families have internet access? I noticed that in the minutes we were piloting some schools during the year, but I'm curious to know what the plan is to ensure that all students will have access to the internet. And then as a teacher, I'm just curious to know if we've thought about what protocols will be used to ensure that students, if we return to the building, have access to temperature checks or other measures that will ensure that they are healthy upon entry to the buildings? And I agree with the concern that three feet may be putting us at risk. My last question is centered around furniture in the buildings. In my particular situation, I have tables, not desks. And so I'm curious to know if that has been taken into consideration when we talk about the social distancing component? Will there be options to, you know, have desks instead of tables? Will there be dividers provided? Like, I'm curious to know what the plan is for the social distancing reinforcement should we return to the classroom? Thank you so much for providing this platform to pose our questions. And then I did say I was done, but I also am concerned about the presence of police in the buildings.
Excuse me, but I apologize, but your two minutes are up. We are going to have to move on.
Jeremy, were you able to, to Israel? Were you able to read to Israel? On, okay. So our last speaker is Ms. Julie Sellers.
Can you let me in?
You're in.
Okay, can you hear me? Hello?
Can't see you.
Yes, we can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. Can you hear okay? I just want you to know that I understand the difficult situation that all of you are in today with the decision that you must make concerning the reopening of schools. I do not believe that the three options sitting in front of you should be your only choices. These options are not innovative or creative and some schools or levels may need additional flexibility. I first spoke to the board in early February about the importance of preparing our schools for the coming pandemic. I believe that was prior to Mr. Morowski's going on his paternity leave and that warning was ignored. I was looked at like I had five heads. We were closed five to six weeks later and never returned. During those weeks, no planning took place to prepare for a school closure. I believe that we were even told during a board meeting that CPS will be staying open and following the New York City model. And we all saw that worked out for New York City. Over 65 educators died of COVID. I was glad that our governor and state health commissioner took action and did not allow Ohioans to follow that pathway. I just want to remind everyone that Hamilton County is currently in a spike and the numbers are replicating the death traps of the nursing homes and prisons earlier in this pandemic. Let me share the data from a survey we sent out with teachers on Friday afternoon. The survey closed this morning and these results are very different than what your surveys have reflected in your plans. I do believe that teachers who responded did so based on your presentation last week. Let me begin. We had almost 1,000 teachers participate and of them, 98% had read and reviewed the plan. So they were making decisions based on information. There are three blended learning models and two in-person models. Which model do you prefer? And of that, 71% of the teachers believed that we needed to continue to have a six-foot social distancing and 29% believed in-person with three feet of social distancing. Of course, the survey members who are not, included survey members who are not classroom teachers. But classroom teachers are very fearful of sitting in a classroom and some of these classrooms only have 660 feet, square feet, and they have 30 to 32 students. They're in those classrooms like sardines. Of the five models, which individual model do you prefer? And most of them chose selection one, 54%. And the second highest was 20% of the selection five. And this, I find, this next question I found very informative. When we asked, are you considered high risk for exposure to COVID? 40% said yes, not the 2% or 5% that your survey reflected. 40% said that they were at high risk. 60% said no. How will there be enough teachers if 40% feel that they are high risk for exposure and will be fearful of coming back is in a situation that is business as normal? And so of that, I know that 79% of the 1,000 teachers who took the survey said that they were going to be signing on today. Teachers want to know what is going on as the district moves forward. I'm glad that your resolution references look at other districts. Hopefully you looked at urban districts in areas with high infection rates like Hamilton County. And thankfully, we are not Warren County and that was one of the counties that you looked at. We have different needs for students and families and I believe that we should be looking at scientific data. I was recently given data from a colleague in England about COVID and their schools. The United Kingdom schools reopened on a limited basis. Many others remained closed. They reopened at the beginning of June with similar precautions to those proposed by administration, distance to the extent allowed by building constraints, masks and reduced class sizes. In a short period, there has been a doubling of the national COVID infection cases rates due to the outbreaks in the few schools that were reopened. Did you hear that? Double the cases and a serious spike in the country because of schools reopening. Many CPS teachers have concerns regarding the possibility of teaching both in a blended learning environment five days a week without, yeah?
With all due respect, we know that we have waived your two minutes and we really want to hear what you have to say, but I would ask for your consideration in allowing us to continue with the meeting because we actually have some timeline deadlines today. So please, if you could be brief, we'd appreciate it.
Many teachers have concerns regarding the possibility of teaching in a blended learning environment five days a week without additional planning time for creating the uploading of online content. There are other areas of concerns about how services will be provided to students with IEPs, LEPs, WEPs, and all of these groups need to be able to attend school based on their plan for instruction and should be in school receiving their minutes of instruction based on their individual plans. Again, different students could be in school different numbers of days. There's been no communication in any plan or with CFT teachers or parents about any of the special ed services. Based on the Cohere report, parents want consistent and reliable communication. Employees agree that they also need consistent and reliable communication to support them as we begin to prepare for the difficult 2021 school year. Parents want partner during every step of the, want to be partners during every step of the reopening process and are eager to work with CPS to ensure that their children have the best and safest repos, return possible. This is also what teachers want. Employees should not have to risk their lives or the lives of their family to do their jobs. We all saw how nurses and doctors who worked with COVID patients were socially distancing from their families and quarantining. They did this for two to three months top.
First, we, we really need to ask, we're really trying to be courteous, but we are going to ask you if you could please in your comments within the next minute.
Okay. So we listed, my microphone is muted. Is that right? It's unmuted, okay. Consistent district communication we need for parents and employees. We need clearly written procedures concerning cleaning, sanitizing protocol and reporting processes when, and so that we know how to report it when this is not done. People do not trust this will happen. We need written expectations for mask symptom screenings, guidelines for social distancing, testing, screening, tracing and guidelines and communication for contact tracing and/or school exclusion or school closures when there's an uptick for quarantines. And we also must make sure that employees must be given options for leave or remote teaching as soon as possible. Families must be given the options for remote learning as soon as possible. And without these sets of numbers, we will not be able to move forward. As always, CFT and our members are willing to assist the district moving forward to be successful during the 2021 school year. And schools also need to know what their budget and staffing is so that they can move forward with their plans. And I will send you my complete comments as soon as this meeting is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it, do we have any more speakers, Ms. Wagner? Thank you. Okay, so we've heard from everyone and we truly appreciate your comments. I know a lot of the folks in that segment had lots of questions and we're getting ready to move into the Board Matters agenda item, at which time, board members will have an opportunity to express opinions, thoughts, ideas. They may even respond to some of the questions that you all might have. So at this time, I'd like to open up Board Matters for board member comments for discussion of options for questions. Who's first? Go ahead, Ms. Bolton, go ahead. We'll just go down the line.
Thank you and thanks to the community for the input all of these weeks. I really appreciate it and we have three opportunities to decide and hopefully together we will decide the best for the kids and the staff and the community. I, I'll just state that I have a preference, which is the four and one, which is the idea of having in-person instruction four days a week and one day a remote instructional day. That also could be used for professional development and what have you. There are a couple of reasons that I support that, even though I've been so concerned about the three feet versus the six feet. I think the superintendent has done a great job of going out and rounding up the kinds of information that I needed regarding being reassured about as best that we could have health provided and safety provided. But for me, I believe our children, it's not a question of it's unsafe to go to school. It's a question for many of our kids, it's not safe to not go to school. It's not safe to stay out of school, either academically or from a health consideration. Part of the four and one is I would like to have our kids be here as long as possible, but also because I think somebody mentioned it, it provides a predictability about when childcare would be needed. The other issues like two and three, I am extremely concerned and I want to bring about and compliment Mr. Messer for mentioning this some weeks ago. We have a crisis in the district and nationally, which is COVID. But we also have to meet that crisis, but in doing so, we cannot dismantle our entire personnel complement or go bankrupt. And I believe that unless we choose four and one, indeed, we will have to be, and it's my understanding from the administration, it's the board's understanding from the administration, we are talking hundreds of riffing, dismissal, position changing and what have you under number one, as well as unpredictability regarding childcare. But also from my standpoint, besides the financial and what have you, as a person that spent about 48 years of my life worrying about other people's children, I feel that we need to put into play a system that we can control and improve upon on a weekly basis. I think having the remote as well as the in-person will prepare us for the inevitable shutdowns, building by building or by district. Because the kids and the staff will be using that time to do both of the things that they need to, as well as the cleanliness piece, but also the period and the time of continuous improvement after we review each week and the success of it. And finally, the other issue I need to mention is that nobody in this room wants to do anything that will harm children. And we may have different opinions, but all of us, I think, have demonstrated that we have learned from this effort and have a vision of also making the district move to this new norm. I don't want to go back to the status quo. There is a brighter peace to all of this if we can do what we need to do. And I would suggest, I'm interested in the four, one option.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Morowski.
Thank you, President Jones. And thanks to all the speakers, not only today, but in our last meeting and depth committee meeting and other various meetings that we've had. And one more kudos to Superintendent Laura Mitchell, Treasure Wagner and the team who's come up with these options and took all the input from us and from the community to get to this place. So my opinion is unchanged from last week for the 1,300 or so folks. I'm sure some of them are the same. I will not support an option that is less than six feet spacing. And I'll say why. I will also note that whatever the will of the board is, I will support adamantly as a team player and we will, we will do the best by the kids in the fall. If it's not option one, I will stand behind the will of the board and we will get it done. But just a couple of notes of why I am so adamant. We have talked a lot about the World Health Organization tonight and their three feet. And while I do not pretend to know more than officials at the World Health Organization, this is an organization that also doesn't believe in asymptomatic transmission, depending on what day you ask them. We have also referenced the AAP, American Academy of Pediatrics document frequently and for good reason, because in it, it does seem to suggest that if you're wearing the masks and you're doing all of these other things, three feet may work. But they also reiterate in that same white paper or whatever you want to call it, that six feet is kind of the best. Which leads me to my next point is with the three feet, I just feel like the words potentially and could are used more frequently than with the six feet. And it makes me, it just, it makes me uneasy. I do not like the prospect of two days on, three days off. I don't, I really don't. Educationally speaking, the childcare concerns I hear. But more so even in the childcare concerns, we have a number of folks in our district living with folks who are immunocompromised or over a certain age. And to be perfectly frank, ultimately, it becomes, easy is not the right word because none of this is easy. But it may be more palatable to think about the childcare concerns versus dead grandmothers. And that's something that is weighing on me. A couple more things and then I'll pass the mic to Ben or Mr. Lindy. The numbers are really, really concerning right now and I'm not even certain we should reopen. I also think that we may ultimately close. I also think that we may ultimately close again, but I think this is the decision that we're going to keep making. And I've said this to my colleagues and I'd like to say it now again, I wouldn't rather make these decisions with six other people. We talk about the new normal. I think it's time we stop doing that. I think this is the new normal and this is the decision that we make until there's a vaccine. And lastly, I want to touch on the benefits of the six feet. I've talked about why I don't support the the three feet, but why I do support the six feet. Obviously, health and safety, but there's two other primary reasons. One, we talk about one of our third guiding principles has been accelerating learning, health and safety, equity and accelerating learning. I feel as if in the six feet model with less students in the classroom, the ability to do that acceleration is more feasible. It's much smaller class sizes. So just pedagogically speaking, I feel as if having been a classroom teacher for 10 years, that the ability to not only remediate what has been lost, but to accelerate, the chances are better. And then lastly, it is a very disruptive model for all sorts of reasons. All the reasons the speakers have elucidated very well, I don't need to build upon. Yes, it's disruptive, but it's consistently disruptive. And what I worry about is going back four or five days is having to close again in an inconsistent manner. If we have to close building by building for two to five days based on a case, and then that student has a sister at another school and a brother another school, those are three schools that shut down for two to five days. And I just I feel that none of these options are good. And so we really are being faced with the most difficult decision, at least in this incarnation of the board that we've had to face. But I do think those are the benefits. I appreciate all the time and my colleagues. Lastly, kudos to all six of y'all as well. I know that you have been putting in as much time as me over the weekend and talking and learning. So that's my two cents. I favor option one.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy.
Thank you, President Jones. I think we're living through an incredibly, incredibly challenging time, and this vote is likely very, very tough for everyone who is up here. The spring was hard. Remote teaching and remote learning were difficult for almost everybody. Kids felt disconnected from friends and teachers while families navigated enormous strain. And we missed the sports, the music, the events, the graduations that make up so much of what a school community is about. The spring has also been hard because loved ones have gotten sick. Family members have lost jobs. Loved ones have died. People feel extremely strongly on all sides of this issue. From my part, having looked at the arguments on all sides and having consulted with people I trust from a diverse range of backgrounds, I've come to believe that the hard but right thing to do is to support option one, the blended model. I want to talk for just a minute about why I think this is the right thing to do. We're seeing an enormous rise in cases nationally in Ohio and specifically here in Hamilton County. The key to slowing the spread of this potentially deadly disease is social distancing, that is keeping at least six feet of distance between one another. Wearing masks, hand washing, cleaning, these things all matter too, but social distancing is an absolutely critical part of the response. Any option other than number one would shrink the space between students from the recommended six feet to three. I don't think that's the safest, responsible thing to do. Kids can carry and spread the illness while showing no symptoms at all, and bringing 36,000 kids together in confined classrooms will lead to more people in the community getting sick, more people going to the ICU, and more people dying. There is also a clear issue of racial equity in this decision. Because of longstanding structural inequality and systemic racism, African Americans are dying of COVID-19 at three times the rate of white Americans. Our district is nearly two-thirds African-American, and sacrificing the six-feet social distancing requirement would have tripled the negative impact in this largest segment of the district. Because this is such a big decision, I wanted to check my perspective with individuals from a range of diverse backgrounds and experiences. I talked to two of the top medical experts in the city of Cincinnati. I talked to African-American parents, grandparents, and community leaders. I talked to white parents, and I talked to teachers. To a person, every single one of them said that we absolutely cannot sacrifice the six feet of social distancing. And I just say that tonight, I kept tally of all the different comments, and 65% of the speakers were opposed to either the four-day option or the fifth-day option. I think it's particularly worth noting that, to my knowledge, we've been unable to find a single local medical expert who is willing to say publicly that moving from six feet to three feet is okay. To the contrary, one of the experts I spoke with said that doing so would lead to a documented increase in hospitalizations and deaths. So finally, before closing, I just want to anticipate a few of the counterarguments that may come up tonight. First, if we do the blended option, students will be doing remote learning two to three days per week, and people may argue that based on our experience, the spring, remote learning is hugely problematic for people. I just want to say that I agree with that. I just think we have to challenge ourselves to make it better, and that rising to the challenge of doing so is a better choice than knowingly increase the damage that this disease will do to our community and disproportionately in the African-American community. Second, board members may bring up the very real issue of childcare coverage. This, too, is a very real challenge, and it presents a time when this city can rise to face it together. Whether it's families working together to pool coverage, churches and other faith-based organizations opening up space for small group of kids or other partner organizations, this is something we're going to have to work through together. And I believe that the challenge it presents, however hard, are temporary, and that the loss of loved ones that come with other options are not worth. Third, and I promise I'm winding up, I've heard the argument many times that the teachers won't be able to enforce six feet of social distancing. To this, I'd say two things. First, if we try and fall short of six feet, it is still better than trying and falling short of three feet. Second, even if we don't succeed at all in keeping kids six feet apart, by having the student body broken into two groups, we limit the spread of the virus to within those two groups rather than across the entire student body. I'd just add this, that the concern came up earlier about employees who might be rifted under scenario one. My understanding is that that's entirely possible under any of the scenarios that are on the table. So in closing, I just want to acknowledge again, this is incredibly hard. I want every student to be back in school five days a week. We just need to find a way to do that safely. And until we can bring kids back safely five days a week, I support option one. Thank you.
Ms. Bates.
Then again, I would like to reiterate, as I did the other from what I said the other day, this is an incredible balancing act. And our decision has many other implications other than preventing the spread of COVID-19. I can borrow a statement from the American Academy of Pediatrics that says, "Children's and adolescents have been placed as a result of the isolation of morbidity and mortality from physical or sexual abuse, substance abuse, anxiety, depression, and suicidal ideation." And here in the city of Cincinnati, homicides are surging since the pandemic closures had been mandated, and gun violence has increased, and our kids are being involved and hurt. So COVID-19 is a huge concern, but all these residual implications are also a big concern, and our decision is going to impact that as well. Secondly, we are going to have a huge economic impact on the area. Parents need to work, and if parents have to stay home with children and lose their employment, that's that's going to have a terrible impact on the local economy. Parents need a safe place to send their children, and I feel confident in our district that we can provide, if that's what parents want to do, send their children to our schools, that our schools can be very safe places for them. Third, I do believe that we can be creative, and I heard the superintendent say that she wants to revamp the Cincinnati Digital Academy. And agreed right now that it's not probably a, you know, one of our, one of our, what, A schools, but with great attention to improve curriculum there, I believe this would be a good option for parents who really don't want to send their children to to schools four or five days a week. And I do want to insert a personal piece here. Back in March, I went to New York City before it closed and was there during the closure and came back and was very, very sick. Stayed home for three weeks, had great care and advice from my doctor. And this week, and the advice of my physician, because my daughter is having a C-section next week, and I'm going to be the caregiver while the parents are in the hospital, advised me to have the antibody test, and I tested positive for antibodies. I know how terrible this disease is. I don't want to see people having to suffer through this. And I, of course, was one of the lucky ones. But I do believe that going to a model four or five days for children, providing a safe place for them, and also giving families an option through the Cincinnati Digital Academy would would be good choices for our community and we can, with with some assurance with our practices and with training for our staff, provide a safe environment for our students. So I would advocate, number one, for the five days a week. And number two, I would be satisfied with the four, but I do believe our children need to be back in a safe place and a reliable place for their education and for their well-being.
Thank you. Mr. Messer.
Thank you, President Jones. So like my colleagues, of course, safety and well-being of our children and our staff, and I mean all staff, teachers, paras, lunchroom workers, bus drivers, all of that, I think we all kept top of mind. But of course, then how we think about that and think through it, and how we take safety and blend it with well-being, I think that's where you start to vary a bit. You know, I I think that going from three feet to six feet, you know, I don't take that lightly, and I think many of the guidelines stating that three and when possible, six, or especially when changing classes. Other states are making those types of decisions as well, Massachusetts being one that that we have received. And I believe there are several other states that have come within the past five to six days. But I, of course, weigh that. But then I think about when we're in that two to three day model. My daughter, we're very blessed, and we understand the privilege that we have that we have a stay-at-home parent because we have young children. It's more economically sound to have somebody stay home who can project manage what that means when they're not in school. Other families, as I was told by several parents who are in my daughter or my son's class, and then one parent is in my daughter's class, said, "I don't have the option to not work. So whether you go two to three days or five days, my kids will be in some setting somewhere. Isn't it better to control it where they are with you in what I call the cohort? And unless we can track where all those students are when they're not with us to understand the exposure they may have there, then we're negating the risk." Now, if we have staff members, I understand that as well. My companies have these same conversations. But if you have underlying health condition, my mom, let's say she worked at this district, I wouldn't let her work the two to three day, and I wouldn't let her work the five day. If you have an underlying health condition, whether you're a student or a staff member, that has to be addressed. I'm concerned that the six versus three argument, it's kind of where we've gotten down to, and that that's going to cost lots of people to lose their jobs. I'm concerned that families who already struggle are now going to struggle more, not in just having to find childcare, figure out how to pay for it. I think that there is already chaos in those households that we're trying to help facilitate just in the world that we have, that I truly believe the students are better with us. Now, with the decision that we're about to make, regardless of what that is, I really don't believe that we can predict the future. So just like what happened this spring, we can never decide what's going to happen in the weeks and months ahead. And what I know about this district is there will be metrics and a scorecard, and there will be a report. And at such time that there are spikes, there will be a decision to make that we will need to adjust our plans regardless of what that choice is. I also believe that we don't know what the governor is going to announce, and that it can also be, we know that that's coming later this week, which is also going to add another layer of complexity, perhaps. But that being said, I'd like to thank Laura and the team for bringing these plans to us, and I know that they will move heaven and earth to make whichever one is chosen, make it work to the best of our potential for the betterment of our students. And I don't want to miss the opportunity to thank the 1,433 members of our community who have tuned into a school board meeting. And I think that probably has to be a record. I think there are great things that have come from this COVID world, and one is the ability to think creatively in how we engage people. We could never have fit 1,400 people in this room. So I hope we take a lesson from this in how we engage with people going forward. And for all of you 1,400 and plus people, there is a lot of work that you can do to help us live in these plans and every plan going forward. So stick with us, and I know that together we are going to do what's best for our children. Thank you.
Ms. Powers.
Yes, thank you, President Jones. I too would like to thank the superintendent and the P L T, all of the comments from the community, teachers, parents, and other stakeholders. This, of course, this decision has not been without much contemplation, so I kind of wrote out my statement. It helps me to stay focused and on task. Processing the pros and cons of each reopening option, as well as the realities of the stifling trade-offs. And some of my fellow board members have talked about the trade-offs regarding staffing, regarding equity. There has been a plan, there has been a lot of reviewing of recommendations from the AAP, plans across the country regarding other school districts and our state. There have also been a review of multiple emails from our community members, communities and taxpayers, speakers voicing their fears, concerns, and suggestions about reopening. There have been work groups, surveys, P L T data, and results to consider also. For me, the model that posts the best possibility of safety for engaging with our students and allowing a more intimate interaction between student and teachers upon the possible reopening in the fall is blended learning. This allows for the teachers to have a socio-emotional support for students in a smaller classroom. For me, socio-emotional connectedness is very important, especially with the trauma that our whole community has established, has experienced over the last three months with COVID-19. The smaller classroom and the decision upon the he comes on the heels of the governor's concern about the growing number of positive COVID cases, along with our with the representative Dr. Melville Moore from CDC, that are pertinent to the decision of supporting option one. I think this transition from blended learning will help us with the inevitable possibility that we will have another statewide shutdown if our numbers continue to go up, and I think we'll be in a better place to do that.
Thank you. Okay, so in typical fashion, I I'll make the last comment. And I my plan is to be very brief, because I would be dittoing everything that my colleagues said here. But, you know, making a joke about ditto, to me, is really not fair, because this this has been the single most challenging decision that I think all of us have had to make. And my voice is shaking because I really don't think there's a most optimal choice. Everything that everybody said up here and all 1,430 people here have very strong opinions about which direction we go. The reality of it is, we didn't ask for this, but we're trying to make the best of what we have. So we are definitely in a new reality. And in this new reality, I think there are lots of things that we're going to learn from this. Somebody spoke to the need for the system to change. I see this as an opportunity. I'm not downplaying the critical factors that are involved in here, but I see this as a new opportunity, whichever option we take, to really transform our system and do things differently. I must say that today, I mean, tonight, I came in with an idea, with a thought about I must say that today, I mean, tonight, I came in with an idea, with a thought about which option I prefer. And I heard the superintendent say something that said, that supported my position. And then I heard the treasurer say something that didn't support my position. And that's not a bad thing. That's the reality of what we are having to deal with. So it doesn't make the job any easier. First and foremost, as an African-American woman with underlying health conditions, I'd be remiss if I said that I didn't see that as a priority factor in my decision. The disproportionate rate of this disease in the black community, it goes unstated. We all know what those numbers are. As a mental health professional, former mental health professional, I worked 40 years with kids. I understand all those other societal ills and things that people are dealing with. So how do you compare that, and I'm not making light of that, how do you compare that to the risk of bringing home a disease that could ultimately kill you? So, you know, that's a hard thing for me to fathom. I have to go with what I believe is the right thing to do in terms of the safety and the health of our kids. And I believe that there's opportunity there for us to do things differently. I'm saddened by some of the things, the fallout that will happen as a result of that. But I also think that this is a time for us to rebuild as well. So I guess what I'm saying is, we have to live in this new reality. We're going to be faced with changes in protocol. And I know some of the people in the hearing of the public had asked questions about the how-tos. You know, how are we going to do this? And I heard Ms. Sellers speaking that. You know, we've had some level of conversation about all of these things. And, you know, I have full confidence in our leadership team that we're going to get this work done. And that's what we're here for. That's what we're here for. We're accountable to our public. So whatever option we have to take, then we have to be accountable to make sure that it works. So given that, I am going to say that my preference at this point would be, first, option one, and secondly, option four. So that's where I stand. And I really appreciate the board, my board colleagues being transparent and honest about where you are. And we're going to move on. We have to take a vote. And I know I've heard people say, whatever we decide, we're going to stick with. So if there, do folks have other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
I really enjoyed everybody's comments. I do want, for the benefit of the community, to, in full transparency, I do want the community to know the, not just the financial cost of whatever we decide, but at least also the full-time employees' cost. First, one, and four, and five, or however, one, two, and three, I guess it is now. Because I think people need to know, because after this decision is made, the next thing will be for the district to then implement this. And I don't think we've discussed in public necessarily, and we've only in executive session, because it's a personnel matter, have shared what we're really talking about regarding both riffing and dismissal. And I think that would be helpful if the treasurer would just give us the totals of the three plans, because that will start right away.
Yep.
That will start this week. So I think those numbers need to be held. And I would also like the superintendent to chime in a bit on some of the mitigating or some of the information that she has found out for all of us, and summarize it regarding the health piece that makes any one of these so important. So if we could have those summaries, I think that would be helpful and only fair to the public.
Gotcha. Okay. Ms. Wagner?
Yeah, so just to remind everyone, option one is the six-feet social distancing, two days a week, and then alternating. And the reductions that are needed financially are almost $48 million. It's pretty significant. We've identified 726 positions that would not either, would either need to be cut to help fund it, or are no longer needed under that model. That doesn't necessarily mean 725 people will lose their jobs. Positions go away, some people can get repurposed into other roles. Option number two, which was five days a week, had a net reduction of $57 million. At this point, we've only identified 155 positions, but we have $24 million, $25 million left to go in order to cut. So we'll have to come up with more. And we did, just so the public understands, we did review all 1,209 vendor contracts and made decisions about shortening them, delaying them for a year, or just stop that service. So we're not only going after employees' positions, we're looking at vendor contracts as well. And then under the third option is the same level of identified position reductions, and we have an $8 million gap to close. So just to reiterate, various one, six-feet social distancing, we've cut 726 positions, and then that closes that gap. On the other two, we have 155 positions that are identified, but we still have more cuts to make. $24 million, $24.5 million, and $8 million on the last one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent?
So first, I want to say that this is really tough for the administration, for all of our staff, as well as for the board. There are absolutely no perfect answers or solutions to this. So I remember when I think back, and it's funny, because the first caller who called in, Mr. Hammond, he was actually one of the first people that I talked to before schools were closed, because we were canceling field trips to foreign countries. And in many instances, parents were very upset with me. At the end of the day, I feel that was the right thing to do for the safety of our kids. When I think about, that started our whole thought process around, how do we go to a quick closure, and how do we put a remote learning plan in place? Even at that time, when we were going through that, I did not think that in June, the 29th, we would be sitting here making a decision as to whether we open or how we reopen in the fall. So I was optimistically hopeful that this would not be as severe as it has been, and that we would have a better solution that would fit everyone's needs. When I think about not allowing field trips to move forward, and that was the right thing to do, and I think about our remote learning plan, which we had to put in place very quickly, I also think about the learning that was lost the last 10 weeks of this school year. I think about having to try to put together meals very quickly and make sure that kids had what they needed and could even get transportation to those meals. When I think about all of those things together, it is really very tough. You know, the administration was asked to put together a set of considerations for the board, which we did, involving parents, community members, staff members at every level of the organization, come up with the options that we proposed to the board. When I also think about the fact that we've lost funding and the potential for more funding, it is really hard to make these decisions with fewer dollars to support the needs of all of our kids. So again, I will say, this is very tough. The administration was also asked to get expert opinion from the medical field, from the scientists, which we did, through the AAP, as well as the World Health Organization. We provide that information to the board. I will say that none of the doctors that I spoke with locally were willing to go on record to say, for sure, three feet is the way to go. But I am not one to argue with their research or their data or the science. It's not my field of expertise, and so I'm so happy to have others who can help us with this. Earlier today, I was at South Avondale with Children's Hospital, a huge team of people who didn't have to be there, who could have said, CPS, this is your problem, but said, we want to be with you arm-in-arm to help you figure this out, because if we can provide a better service on the front end with your kids in school, then we'll see fewer cases in our hospital. And so I believe that with the support of Children's Hospital, as well as Interact for Health and the Cincinnati Health Department, we can put measures in place to make our schools a safer place for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. We appreciate that. And I think on behalf of the board, I would say that we also want to thank those partners, those, you know, Children's Hospital and the Health Department for all the assistance that they've given us. We needed it. We needed to have that level of expertise to help us drive some of the decisions that we make. So we're very appreciative of that. So having said that, board members, I think we're ready to move on to resolutions. If this provided, everybody's okay, we don't have any more questions or comments. Now, this situation is a little bit unusual, because we've not been in this situation before. So we have three resolutions to vote on. We have the ability to vote on all three, and depending on the outcome of the vote will determine how we proceed with the next step. So you can vote yea or nay on each one of those, to be clear about that. And if we falter in the process, I'm going to ask Mr. Hoing to make sure that we, that I stay on track and are doing things the right way. So the, there are four resolutions on the agenda, but the first one is just the standard template for all of them, and it should have been removed from the agenda, so it's not really relevant. Okay. And then, so here's, let me see, da-da-da-da-da. Let me, let me just read this real quick, just for the purpose of board members, so they, we kind of get a better understanding of the process. So although there are three options, we want to be able to provide administration with clear direction on one model. And consistent with our board bylaws, we hope to have a majority of board members support one of these three models. I will introduce the three resolutions, one at a time, ask for a motion and a second. If there is a motion and a second, I will ask for a discussion and then a roll-call vote. After considering these resolutions, if a majority of board members support one model, then the board will support that model and present it to the administration. Now granted, we know that there's a possibility that we could have sort of a split vote on all of them. So there is, there is the option of, but we, that, where we will vote, need to vote more than once in a runoff, if that's where we end up. So there could be a potentially, a potential runoff. So I know for the purpose of the public, this seems a little bit complicated. It seems a little complicated. And we're going to do our best, we are going to reach a consensus, but we're going to do our best to simplify the process. So I guess I, does someone have a question? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I have a question. It's sort of critical from a standpoint of, you know, when we get a majority, we have a majority, but we might still move on to the next resolution.
Yes.
And I, my understanding, as we were going to try to proceed, as we build this consensus, as well as pass and find a majority, is that it's possible that people would be voting, obviously for their first choice, on whatever resolution that would be, but that people would also be voting approval for what they could, what they could also support. And that's how we were going to try to reach the larger number, or come together with the larger number, rather than necessarily a foursome, a four-three vote. So I'm just asking if it is we are willing to support a resolution, you might be willing to support more than one resolution of this group. Is that, is that what I?
I don't know if I understood the process that way, but I think that's a good suggestion. So actually, we're asking people, what are your top two? Is that what it is? So you could actually-
For the consensus, or whatever, to find, yeah.
If that's the will of the board, we can do that. So you vote for number, your number-one choice and your number-two choice, right? And Mr. Hoing, I'm looking at you to make sure that legally, we're in good shape with that. Are you all okay with that?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Lindy?
So my understanding was that, to model out the example, it would be Resolution One, favor imposed, Resolution Two, favor opposed, Resolution Three, favor opposed.
Right.
That was my understanding of how we were going to do it. I'm a little confused about what this one is, and whether it changes anything or not.
Go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
I have no idea if it changes or does anything, but I do think that what it is, is, just as you captured it, favor or oppose, it is support or not support, meaning that you could have more than one resolution that you would support. It's not a aye or a nay, a yes or a no. It is, I could support this. And I think that's how we, I would hate to think that such a huge decision, whatever it might be, the huge decision would break down into a four-three, especially as it pertains to the kinds of staffing and financial arrangements, let alone the health and safety of our kids and our staff. So I think it's not aye or nay, as much as it can support, can't support.
I don't, Mr. Lindy, did that answer your question?
I am not sure. And so I'm going to think about it for a second.
Okay. We'll come back. Mr. Morosky?
I would just say, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Bolton, and I understand, but like, for me, for example, I am a yea on one of these. I can support all, and I will support all three. The point of that being is, if it, well, we'll see how this all shakes out, I suppose, but if it comes down to, say, for example, option two and three, the four or five day, I would vote no over and over again. So, but I will support ultimately, but I, so I, if that, that makes sense. I mean, I don't know that we can ask us to vote on our top, I don't know that we can actually-
Yeah. Well, when, you know, I think in clarifying the process, I was under the impression that we would do exactly what Mr. Lindy said. And that's vote on your choice, one, two, or three. So what Ms. Bolton is offering is an, is an alternative to that, or in addition to that? I just need to know what direction the board wants to go with that.
I think it's in addition to that, because I heard at least three people say two options.
But I think, okay.
And I think, I think that's important, rather than, this is a resolution that's a split vote, or whatever.
So, so what's on the table, and everybody has to be in agreement, we have to reach a consensus about that. What's on the table is, you vote your choice number one, or your choice number two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right? Is everybody in favor of that? Ms. Bowers?
I'm, okay. I still have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
So if we play out a scenario where what I'm worried about is a situation where everybody's first choice leads to a four-three outcome, but everybody's second choice could make it look like something has five votes, but it's not actually five votes, because everybody's first choice was the other one. Does that make sense? Like, that's the situation I'm worried about, and if somebody can convince me that this situation won't create that problem, I'm totally open to it.
I'm not the one to clarify it. Ms. Bolton?
I would clarify it that we've, the school board is different than the city council in concept. We try to find consensus and be one body when possible. So I, as I said in the beginning, I got a first- So I, as I said in the beginning, I got a first choice, and I don't know, you know, if I vote no or yes on the other ones. The point is, this board has to, by, by history and tradition and protocol, must find consensus, not a majority. It must find consensus so that the body is there. I don't have a problem with people voting first choice, but also being able to say that as a board member, building consensus, I'm also going to show that I support another option as well. It's not like it's, it's not like it's weighted, you know, it's not like proportional representation.
Actually, the way I see it, it is weighted, but, but that's just me, because I think, I think, given, given where we are right now, it, you know, it would be a majority vote on a, on a particular option, and then we do it the two ways, it could easily switch because somebody says, well, I can live with that. But like Mr. Lindy is saying, it may not be their first choice. But whatever process we agree to, we all have to agree to do it.
Absolutely.
Ms. Bates?
Ms. Bolton's option, and if we get to the situation that Mr. Lindy talked about, then it's time for discussion again.
Yes, that's right.
Not, okay, so the second or third prevail. So again, back to Ms. Bolton, we're looking for consensus, not for a, a split.
Mr. Lindy?
I think if, if we're going to do it that way, then I think people, my, my, my personal preference would be we find some way of people indicating, this is my first choice, this is my second choice. Because I don't want, I don't want that to be unclear. And I, I think it would be odd, I want to acknowledge I'm the newest board member here, but I do think it would be odd if we have a four-three vote of first choices, but more people's choices around a second choice. That seems counterintuitive to me, that the second of those two scenarios would carry.
I, I, I think I'm where you are, Mr. Lindy. I think I agree with what you're saying, but I, again, it, it is what does the board want to do? And so I'm adhering, and, and the question, I think Mr. Lindy is suggesting, that if we have some indication of what people's top two choices are, that might be helpful. So why don't we do that? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, again, it's, it's a matter of consensus, rather than majority.
No, I'm asking you what your choices are. We know it's a matter of consensus.
My choice would be the four-one, first, and I could be convinced of the five. I'm not convinced that I want to lay off 700 people.
Okay, four-one. First choice, four, second choice, one. Mr. Morosky?
Yep, second choice, one.
Second choice, one. Each's choices are four days or five days, not blended. Can we use four days and five days and blended as the words instead of one, four, five, or one, two, three, please?
Okay, yeah, we can.
My, my, my choice is blended.
Yes, Mr. Lindy?
My choice is blended too, and I just want to bring up again, I don't think it's quite accurate to say that the only, or to imply that the only scenario with RIFs will be blended. I think we'll have that many under any scenario, they just haven't been identified yet. And I could be wrong about that, but I just would like to say that's my current understanding.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure, I was saying, my, my first choice is blended, and I was responding to the concern that that would be the only one that would lead to reduction in force, and then I think we will have comparable reduction in force under any of the three.
I don't know if I understand that, but, okay, Ms. Bates?
Sometimes I'm just talking to myself, I can move on.
My first choice would be four and one, and my second would be five day.
Say that again, five, one. Five?
Five days. Second choice.
Um.
Always go late. My choice would be the five days, with the four and one being second.
Ms. Bowers?
Blended, it's the only choice for me.
My first choice is blended, and I honestly don't have a second choice. I'm going to live with whatever decision is made, but I do not have a second choice. Okay. All right. So are we ready? And I'm going to ask folks to get your, make sure your resolutions are out, because you don't know, I'm going to call on you. So we're going to have the first one. Mr. Messer, please present the following resolution.
Whereas in response to the COVID-19 health crisis, Ohio Governor DeWine ordered the closure of schools of all Ohio K-12 schools from March 16th to 20th, the end of the 2019-20 school year. And whereas Governor DeWine and most members of the General Assembly have said that local school boards of education will control decisions about when and whether to return to school for the 2020-2021 school year. And whereas the board has received deep and meaningful feedback from the Cincinnati Public Schools community about decisions to return to school, including but not limited to a community survey that received more than 6,200 responses, three public school board meetings that included prolonged hearings of the public, a meeting of the Cincinnati Public Schools Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee, and other direct communications with feedback from students, parents, partners, principals, teachers, staff members, and Cincinnati Public School Union representatives. And whereas the board has considered multiple options for returning to school, ranging from fully remote to fully in-person models, along with numerous hybrid and blended considerations developed at the direction of the board, under the guidance of the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, the requirements of the state of Ohio, and the advice of the Cincinnati Children's Hospital. And as a result of comprehensive research, the administration used a risk assessment and management process to develop options for which the board would select. And whereas the board has reviewed these models and models that have been proposed in neighboring and urban school districts in Ohio, and models that have been implemented in other countries, now therefore be it resolved, having fully considered the potential options for returning to school in the 2020-2021 school year, the board determines to implement the following model. The district will implement a blended learning model with half the students attending school at a time, students with alternate between, will alternate between two days per week and three days per week schedules, and receive remote instruction on days when they are not in school. Be it further resolved that in lieu of returning to school in person, district families may opt for remote learning opportunities at Cincinnati Digital Academy or Virtual High School, and will have the right to return to the schools, student school, for a period of up to one year. I present the resolution as written.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just to clarify, this is option number one, blended, okay? And I did, I forgot to say this, the, the people who are introducing these motions, these, they're not necessarily indicative of their vote. So I just want to make sure people knew that. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
No.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
No.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. So that vote is a five?
Four.
Four, three.
Four-three.
All right, Mr. Lindy, I'm going to ask you to present the next resolution.
This is Resolution Two, for a fully in-person model with all students attending school five days per week. President Jones, can I read just the part that's different? Can I read just the part that's different?
Yes.
So, same whereas, now therefore be it resolved, having fully considered the potential options for returning to school for the 2020-2021 school year, the board determines to implement the following model. The district will implement an in-person model for educating students with all students attending school five days per week, and then with the same be it further resolved as the first resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? And this is option four, for five days a week. Okay. Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Nay.
Mr. Lindy?
Nay.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
No.
President Jones?
Nay.
So that vote is three, four.
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Bates, will you present the last resolution?
Then, I'll read the, now therefore be it resolved, having fully considered the potential options for returning to school, 2020-21 school year, board determines to implement the following model. The district will implement an in-person model of educating all students four days per week with remote learning available to students on a fifth day per week. So I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Nay.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
No.
President Jones?
No.
That vote is three, four. So if, if you go by majority, it's option number one, but my understanding is, in, Ms. Bolton, according to your recommendation, we should vote on two? We have a four-three vote. Yes, absolutely. Mr. Hoing, I'm going to ask you, okay, so the process was legal, it looks like that the decision is option one for blended learning. Thank you all for your patience and your diligence in this. We have work to do. Okay. Superintendent, do you have a report?
I do, I have a very brief report. It is in the form of a video from our graduation parades. So as the public may recall, we couldn't have traditional graduation ceremonies, and so it was a disappointment for our young people, but after you see the video, hopefully you'll see how much fun they had.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Just in case you all didn't know, but that kid from Gamble's name was Alvin Bowers. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer? Is there a second? Discussion? Ms. Wagner, call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Any inquiries or updates? Okay, any assignments? Any, okay, go ahead, Ms. Bolton. Is this an assignment or an inquiry? Okay.
Administration to present to us a timeline of the implementation, especially the next 30 days, which would include notices and beefing, beefing up the digital, that kind of stuff, transportation, whatever. Thanks.
Yes, so the administration, we worked on a timeline a little while ago, and so we will actually review it tomorrow morning. It is pretty robust, and it started today.
Great, thank you.
Any other assignments? Okay, well, having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. You guys, here we go. Get on the train.
It's only the beginning.
That's right.
Fasten your seatbelt.
Thank you.
Congratulations.